We'll start with a pledge and a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your wisdom to make wise and appropriate decisions for this city that we love. We hope that you give us the strength to battle through weaknesses and celebrate during successes. Dear Heavenly Father, please use us as tools to best serve the great city of Goddard. In your name we pray, amen.
Approval of the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item D, citizen comments. If anybody from the audience that would like to speak today? Please state your name and address.
My name is Tamra Judd. My address is 303 Richard Road here in Goddard. I would like to see the update slash hear about what the city would like to do with the information they got about new community center slash library slash all of that. I know that it was on the agenda for a while and it's no longer on the agenda, so I would like to see that come back on the agenda, please.
So, my understanding, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but we are looking for lots now. I believe we've got plans, am I right, Harland, for the type of design? There was a lot of community input on what they wanted, and I think they were pretty clear on what they wanted. Now we're trying to, without giving too many specifics, work out a deal where we're going to put it. And we're trying to negotiate that spot, and we're in the active process of doing that right now. So, we haven't-
So, stay tuned, it's not off the agenda.
We haven't put it on the back burner, we're still working on it, but as everybody knows, with government, everything takes quite a while. And, but this is a big project, and it's something that's gonna cost a lot of money, but we wanna do it right for the community. We don't wanna do it halfway, so-
Appreciate it, if you definitely need it.
Start brainstorming fundraising ideas.
Is there anybody else? Fowles?
Hello. Matt Fowles, Director of Tanganika Wildlife Park. I just wanted to come and, I guess, see if I could encourage the city to take action on trying to get Hawkins Lane paved. That's something that we've been needing, wanting since we opened 2012. I know it's something that the city's expressed they'd be willing to do and even pay for fully at some, at different points. And so, you know, I'd just like the council's thoughts on that, to see if it's something that we could actually move on instead of just talk a lot.
Well, number one, Hawkins Lane isn't part of the city. It's county, and so we can't spend tax dollars paving a street that we don't even know.
Right, but you can obviously annex it. It was annexed once, just done improperly-
Well, we annexed it once, and all it was is trouble.
Right.
All the residents up there made demands on us even though they weren't part of the city. And so, we de-annexed it because if you aren't happy with what we're doing, then let the county make you happy. So, right now, it's up to the county to take care of that problem because citizens along Hawkins Road weren't happy with how we were doing things. They want benefits without making payments on it.
So, the house, the city only annexed the road, they didn't annex the houses-
We only annexed, we only annexed the road. The people alongside the road didn't wanna be annexed. And so, all we owned was the road, and they were complaining because we weren't taking care of the road properly, and they were paying nothing towards its upkeep.
So, we need to maybe look at annexing the road and the houses?
Well, we cannot, we can't really do that because we have to provide services. After so many years of annexing, we have to provide them with water and sewer. And we wanna pay for a water and sewer line to those houses that are long ways apart.
I believe Larry, you were here at the time, so what I've been told is we even did a study on Hawkins Lane, and it came out, at the time it was about 150,000 to do the road.
We did an estimate, I can remember doing an estimate on Hawkins.
But it got pretty violent is what I heard with the neighbors around. There was the, how fast people move and the volume, and they actually cut the wires because they were so adamantly opposed about doing anything on Hawkins Lane. And so, about that time is what I understand, it went back to the township.
Well, the county owned it.
Yeah.
It went, it went back to the township well before that, well before that. Like, the study that they did was just the last five years or something? It went back to the township within a year or two of us realizing that it was not annexed correctly. So, it's been back in the township for most of the last 12 years.
And do the same people live there that lived there before?
The person that was the most belligerent on the road no longer lives there.
What about the lady right on the corner? Right on the corner?
There's two on the corner. You mean Glenn or-
Husband and wife.
Glenn is on the, on the east side, and then, I don't know the new gentleman's name or family that's on the, the west side. Is that who you're talking about?
It's on the west corner you're talking about, Brian?
The, the custom lawn guy?
Yeah, yeah.
That's Glenn.
Yeah, aren't they pretty against it?
Do what?
They're pretty against it, I know.
I don't know that they're necessarily against paving the road. They're against us having an entrance there, period, but it's not changing, so I don't, I don't think that any of them would mind the, you know, the lack of dust and everything else, and maintenance and everything that goes along with their road.
The thing of it is, would they be game to be annexed and then have specials put on their property to help pay for that? Because that's what they're, that's what everybody else in the city has to do when they get an improvement, is they have to be part of the paying for this thing, and not just the city at large taking it, taking in the rears because somebody wants something.
Well, I mean, I don't know that they would have to be annexed. Obviously, you could still pave the roads without them being annexed. You could still assess most of it to Tanganika if you were going to do that. The city has offered to just pay for it fully because of what we add to the city.
That wasn't, that wasn't a council decision, I'll tell you that right.
No, I didn't say that it was. But that has been expressed to us multiple times throughout the last 12 years. I mean, if you just look at, since you guys put in the sales tax in 2015, Tanganika has paid 1.6 million dollars in sales tax to the state. Your cut of that was 153,133.60. Now, that's as of 12/31/2021. So, it doesn't count any of the revenue that we've already generated this year. So, we have generated all the money needed to pave that road just from the sales tax of the park. If the city were just to pay for it by themselves, like, we're generating the tax. And that doesn't count the economic benefit of the hundreds of thousands of people. It's actually over a million people that we've brought to the city since we opened that are spending money at Dairy Queen and Walmart and McDonald's and all those places.
So, Matt, does this mean that you'll no longer require the access easement that we have in place for the entrance off of 199?
No. Those are completely separate issues. Why are you bringing that up, Ryan?
Because you're asking for an access, essentially what would be a third access point. You're utilizing 183rd, we have access for 199, and now you're looking for Hawkins Lane.
Yes.
So, what of the three would be your primary access point?
The, the one that's currently the main access point now.
So, then, will we be able to work on, say, getting rid of the 199th access point, then?
No, we were using that so that we had another service point for semis and different things when they bring feed and that kind of stuff, so that they're not coming through the public roads, the public parking lot, that they can access back, the back part of the facility where we plan to build our drainage storage and other things now that we have that new property.
And, and where are we at on your request for being taxed as an agricultural use as opposed to a commercial use?
You'd have to ask the governor, I don't know.
So, you don't know where that legislation's at and-
I mean, it's passed both houses, it's up to the-
So, it's up for signing?
Yeah, if he decides to sign it.
And what sort of impact will that have?
I mean, it would affect our property tax, which is minimal. What I just talked about was just the sales tax that regardless of how we're assessed-
And the property tax for a commercial is assessed at what, 25% of the assessed valuation where agricultural is assessed at, what, 1%?
No, it's 3%. Depends on, on what they classify the, the ground and the land as. But all that bill does is changes the designation of the land, not like the commercial building. So, our assessment is 3 point some million dollars. Over 2 million dollars of that is wrapped up in the visitor's center, the Menyara Building, the administrative building. So, it, the, the impact to the city is pretty minimal in terms of how it's gonna impact your revenue base, because majority of the assessment comes from the property buildings themselves, not the actual land. So, the park will see maybe a $7,000 savings.
So, you're saying the buildings will still be assessed at 25%?
Uh huh.
As opposed to the 3%?
It only impacts the land. If you read the bill, it only impacts the land.
Well, unfortunately, we had to learn about it through the league rather than through our community partners, so-
Mr. Fowles, I think, I think that-
Is that, that's really where you wanna go?
I think that, at this point, what I've heard from the council is that what I would like to see, maybe as you speak to your great commissioner, David Dennis, because as Larry has already touched, that it is a county problem. And I'm forced-
But the, the park is in the city. We're part of the city.
And you guys are doing great things for the city. You guys are doing amazing things for the city.
But you guys say that, but then you won't do anything to help us. All I'm asking is to break the road.
Hey, listen to me right now. Since I've been on this council, we have done great things for Tanganika. And you have done great things, you are an attraction to the city like none other. But we have given you a, a very favorable land deal, just since I've been on the city. We've waived tap fees, and we established a CID. So, to say that we're not trying to work with you and not trying to do anything is a mischaracterization of us. I want to work with you. I want to be a great partner with Tanganika. But there are things that we can do and there's things that we can't do. And at this point, it sounds like you need to talk to David Dennis, your county commissioner.
So, just to be clear, you're not willing to annex the road and pave it for us?
I think that's what's coming from the governing body right now.
That's coming from you. I know that's where Larry stands. I would like to see how the other, the other, rest of the council stands. That, that was all I was originally asking for, is to see what everyone's thoughts were on it getting paved.
Michael?
Yeah, my thoughts are, it sounds like your neighbors don't want it. And that's, you know, if you wanna go rally the troops there and come back, that would be an interesting idea. The email that I got was pretty demanding considering all the things we have done for you guys about this one area that's not even city and, you know, I grew up here and it's like, how government works is the people that, that, you know, I grew up on a dirt road on South Street, and it got paved eventually, but it got paved because the people that lived there paid for it. So, that's how it works.
I mean, every road around us was dirt at one point. I've lived out here for over 30 years as well, so-
Well, that's right, but-
I get how that works.
If, if you wanna go back to the neighbors and rally the troops on that, I think that'd be a good idea.
Michael brings up a good point.
Brian?
Yeah, I'm, I'm for the, Michael, I mean, it's the neighbors. You get their signatures and I'm good with it.
Okay. Larry, you got your answer. All right?
Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Item F, consent agenda.
I had one correction, and that was at the very bottom of the minutes that we, that you had said no binding action was taken in the consecutive session and you were here, so that needs to be changed.
Say that, say that again.
So, last meeting?
Yeah.
Needs changed from your name to his name.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Unless, like, you channeled into Larry and spoke, and spoke for Larry.
I don't know if that was a good-
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, we got that fixed? Council's payable?
Just a second.
Did we, do we have a motion? Do we need a motion to fix that?
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion.
We don't?
We have to approve.
We have to approve that change?
It's true. We have to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Larry's correction.
Motion by Sarah. Second. Second by Larry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes.
Trails End, this is the plat for Trails End at 215th and Pawnee, 23rd Street. The final plat was approved at the planning commission on March 14th. The annexation occurred on December 20th. It's to include up to 82 duplexes, 40 of which would be less than the total number of land area. And then, the final drainage, which the plat that was approved by the planning commission, subject to city engineers' approval of the drainage, has been approved, and so it's being presented to you this evening. The planning commission considered the plat. The plat contains 200 residential lots, 80 duplexes, 120 single-family detached homes, for a total gross acreage of 92 and a half acres. It would be considered R2 zoning, and it is currently within the city. This is a map showing the location of 23rd Street and 215th colored in purple. This is the north end with linear trail at the top of the map, and 215th along the left-hand side with the easements and setbacks being standard urban design. This is the second half of the acreage with 215th and 23rd, both again, urban standard design, with the access point being off of 23rd and Walnut being a little further off the map here in the west. So, we have access points off of 23rd and eventually off of 215th. So, we're requesting approval of the plat, which can be done by voice.
Do we have a motion?
I would like to motion to approve the plat as presented.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say-
Mr. Mayor, could I just add one comment?
Go ahead.
I spoke briefly to Brian.
Yep.
I just wanted to make you all aware that the drainage plan has been reviewed, and, and you know, one of the things that was brought up during the, during the hearing of the plat was the drainage. And, and they are incorporating a detention pond there into Reserve C and D, and the net effect is to reduce the peak discharge going across 23rd Street by 25%. Okay? Now, there's going to be more volume of water. You can't avoid that by the fact that you add rooftops, you add streets, impervious surface. But how you can, how you reduce the damage impact is you, you lower the peak discharge. Then there is also a detention pond proposed on the west side there at the, kinda, to the top, further up on the page, and, and it's reducing the peak discharge going to the west by some 36%. So, the net effect of the detention ponds is to reduce the peak discharge, so, you know, we're being, we're being responsible here in, in trying to control the drainage so that the adjacent properties are not negatively impacted by the development.
So, they're actually gonna be 25 and 30% better than right now?
Theoretically, the, the peak discharge, the height, the potential height, I guess, of what the flow depth might be is going to be reduced through those, through those, the drainage ways, but they will run for a longer period of time because that volume of water has to be dissipated. So, I just wanted to make that point to you. Sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out to us.
Okay, so, I had a second by you, sir?
I would be ready to motion.
Oh, okay, where's my motion?
I made-
Did you make one?
I made the motion.
Okay. Motion by Michael.
Sarah seconded it.
Second by Sarah.
I'll second even, I don't know.
All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem.
Technically, there's a discussion. Certain discussion.
Okay, item H2.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. H2 is Water Wells 4 and Center Rehab. As you know, beginning of 2020, these two wells began having issues, had to be taken out of service for repair. We hired a company that done work with the city for decades. They disassembled both wells and repaired them, but they were continuing to have problems. Timeline of that and list of those issues on these next two pages. Well 4, March 2020, a vibration started and it was taken out of service. It was disassembled, inspected, and rebuilt using a new column, new line shaft, and the pump and motor were rebuilt. Approximately one year later, June of 2021, it began to pump sand and was again taken out of service. The company that rebuilt it in 2020 returned and found it to sea due to sand buildup in the hole. Upon inspection, it was determined the well liner developed a hole and required replacing. Well 4 was rebuilt again, including installation of a new liner to approximately 80, 90 feet into the well. The pump was clean, inspected, and rebuilt with new impellers. At that time, the company stated they ran a TV camera down the well, but we had not seen that video. December 2021, same well, again, a vibration was detected, we took it out of service. At this time, we chose to hire a different company, Lane Christensen Company, who I believe drilled well seven or eight many years ago. I might have to look at my notes, it came from the top of my head. They came out, and we hired them under an emergency approval, approved by the city administrator. They disassembled it and inspected it. It was determined on many things, the motor wasn't properly rebuilt, two sections of the shaft were bent. The pump had severe wear with no indication it had been rebuilt during previous rehabs. And because there was no camera run down that and no video provided like we requested, Lane also found a well screen, that the well screen's nearly completely clogged. And that limited the well production and put a strain on the pumping components and contributed to the problems we're having. That well is still out of service. Well 7, 2020 again, December 2020, again, pumping sand was taken out of service. Same company that worked on well 4 initially was hired. They, remember, these two items were on at the same time, so it's not gonna take anything easy. The components were pulled and inspected, revealing a hole in the well liner at about 74 feet in. A new partial liner was installed to 84 feet, and a new submersible pump and motor were installed. Work was completed, and the well was brought back online July 15th, 2021. July 28th, 2021, 12 days after it was brought back into service, the pump and motor locked up. Disassembly revealed the pump was damaged with sand in the bottom of the well. The well company cleaned the sand off of the bottom of the well with concrete, reinstalled a new pump and motor. March 2022, same well. It just stopped producing. We put a voltmeter on it, it was drawing like 8 amps, they draw like 60 at the motor, we knew there was a problem. So, we chose to have Lane Christensen come out and look at that, and they determined that the pump was not attached to the wiring anymore. It wasn't getting electricity to it. So, they disassembled and inspected the well. They found that the partial liner installed by the other company in 2021 had fell, and it was allowing gravel to enter the well, which got down into the bottom of the well, locked the motor up, locked the pump up, and broke the pump off from the shaft when it was turning, and pulled all the wiring out of the pump. That ruined the pump, the motor. Wiring's fine, but the well's also out of service. Due to a number of issues, as I said earlier, on 4 and 7, we hired Lane Christensen Company instead of the initial company we were using to repair the wells. Below are the comments they had, recommendations they had for repairing this well. Well 4, they're going to clean the screens by introducing a 1500 gallon meratic acid and QC21 mixture, and then to disinfect it with a similar amount of high chlorinated water. The column will be rebuilt, the bench shaft will be straightened, the pump that was supposed to have been new will be replaced with a new pump. Signs are showing that initial pump was, that pump was never rebuilt initially. I've seen the pump, it's a mess. The motor from this well is currently a B&amp;B electric motor is being inspected and rebuilt. We've got two motors with them because we were also charged for the rebuilding of two motors. B&amp;B is tearing those down and documenting it, and one, they are for sure was not rebuilt. The other, we've stopped them where they're at before we're spending more money, but we've got issues there. Well 7, Lane recommends we remove the partial liner that the other company put in and replace it with a complete well liner. The, that can be difficult or it can be easy, depending on the workmanship of the company that put in the liner that's there currently. Based on Lane, what they've seen, the workmanship was poor enough, they shouldn't have trouble getting it out, which is not good for us. I mean, it's good to have it fixed, but it's not good at the initial work. Then the well will be reasssembled with a new pump, submersible pump and motor, which was already in there. The cost of this right now-
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
I noted one thing on there. You said the plug that they were supposed to put in the bottom of 7 was bentonite and not concrete?
Yes, yeah, when they came back after they had the initial problem and the first pump locked up the first time, the company that was out told us they were going to cap or seal bottom of that well with concrete.
Because that's where the sand had come in, right? And ruined it, ruined it, yeah.
Correct, that's where the sand came in. When I was out on site, when they pulled the pump and the motor, there were chunks of bentonite stuck to the bottom of the motor. And as you know, bentonite is a-
Expensive clay.
It's a packing clay, but it's temporary in this kind of a situation. At the bottom of the well, it's not permanent. Wouldn't you say so?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I was informed by.
Okay.
So, the costs so far, on 4, we got the 6922. That was approved by city administrator because we wanted to get that thing out and look at it. It was an emergency approval, because we gotta have, we gotta have a well wells in Other costs, clean and disinfect the screen will be a little over 14,000, and then reassembly and testing will be 25,795. Writing on the electric motors, we've got 2668, and do it with them tearing it down and investigating it, we've got hold on that. But that 2668 will cover the full rebuild of the one that wasn't rebuilt, and a minimum the reassembly of the one they tore down partially that may have been rebuilt. Well 7, again, we had an emergency approval to pull it and inspect this, we find out what the problem was. The liner replacement is just over 59,000, and reassembly and testing will be just over 39,000. That's expensive because submersible pumps and, and those motors are not cheap. It's a 75 horsepower motor, and they just don't give those darn things away, they're, they're costly. Total price of that is 155,782. Just to let you know, and I know we will discuss this more, we've spent a little over 156 with the company that failed us.
And we'll discuss that later.
Yeah, that's gonna be discussed more. Not very happy about this, I'll be honest with you. The worst company had a history of doing good work for us. When I talked to them, I talked to their head guy, and what I asked for were two wells that were reliable, that would run, that we did not have to worry about, and we got just the opposite. Where we're sitting.
If we get these other companies to do that, I remember we talked about this last time, when I asked how much that one well was putting out, you said 450 gallons a minute, and I'm not used to seeing anything under 500 gallons a minute.
There-
Is there any way that we can say, hold, somebody speak to the fire on these new ones and saying, okay, this is gonna produce this much, or we ain't paying for it?
There's two concerns with that. One is our permit doesn't allow us to run over 500 per well right now. There's two concerns with that. One is our permit doesn't allow us to run over five hundred per well right now. That's something we're working on also. I've talked to Ag at the water show. I sat down and they were real good. They sat down with me. They pulled it by a pop up. They knew everything about our wells from the day that we built. And they are going to help us open up our, reapply for water rights on four and five, which will allow us to increase that daily amount. We are still perfecting for seven and eight, so we're going to pump. We're going to pump the heck out of them because they can't hit us for over pumping anymore.
But I mean, I would just like to see the capability there.
And I don't know if we will have the capability. Some wells will flow big water and some won't. Harley, you could hardly speak to that. Some of that has to do with groundwater.
Well, I think a lot of that, I think a lot of that has to do with the pump. I think the well and the stream may very well produce it depending on what they, this reliner that they put in will be.
We did lose some screen.
Yeah, okay. So I guess we'll kind of have to rely, they, they can do a pump test. Typically, they do a pump test before they actually, I know when they do a new well anyway, but I think the, the key there is, is making five hundred, four hundred and fifty gallon a minute or whatever is based on the pump capacity to pump that much.
And we're running, we're running over six hundred gallon per minute out of five, even though our permit doesn't allow it. I'm going to ask for forgiveness, not permission.
But I thought, you know, we had a brand new pump in there. It should have been able to handle more than four fifty.
It's my understanding, the way they designed the pumps and the, and the motors and they put them together, they designed them for a certain flow rate and we we specified around on five hundred at four thirty head, correct?
I think, yeah, because they've got a pump against the head that it takes to get it in here to the ground storage tank. So I think, I think we can look at the pump curve that the manufacturer, the supplier provides us to see if it has the capacity to provide, let's say, four hundred and fifty, if that's the magic number, four hundred and fifty gallon a minute, to, to supply that volume of water at the necessary total dynamic head that we need.
Since we're, since we're buying new pumps, can we specify that?
Oh, I think so, sure.
We can definitely.
We can certainly review those pump. They can provide us a submittal, manufacturer's submittal on that pump and, and based upon the pump curve, be able to tell, they can, they can demonstrate to us that it should pump the rate we're looking for at the head it's got a pump against.
One good thing about our wells is we don't have a real heavy drawdown, which meaning when the well's off, for lack of a better term, it's pretty simplified. The offer fills back up in the hole and you get a water hike. And once you get that well going, once you get under pressure, it draws down to a certain level and that's where you draw your water off of. We don't draw down a lot. We, we ran two wells for eighteen hours a day and we had them produce a good five hundred gallon per minute that entire time. So that's one option we have is running. If we can't produce as much per minute, we can run for four minutes. So that is an option as well.
I just, I just always, I'm under the belief that if it can do that, it's not going to work as hard.
And we'll, and we'll definitely, I will definitely look into it. I was following the guidelines of what our permit said and when Harley and I talked, we definitely will ask it. Like we can, we can go as big as we can go. We'll go. I have a problem.
I know, I know there is a limitation on the maximum pumping rate on our permit that we can pump that, that we can pump that well. So we can stay, I mean, we can stay in.
But it would have went to the reserve, I mean.
And then seven and eight, we do. We don't have, seven, eight, we can run more.
What do you mean?
When you got, when the pump has got a reserve, I mean, it doesn't mean it has to pump five hundred gallons a minute.
Right, right.
It just can.
It just can.
Right, yeah.
Right.
What's the type of warranty on these new pumps?
That's another problem that we'll discuss.
And we have no warranty?
Well, when the, and when.
Wouldn't you say, new pumps, no doubt, have a warranty? How about the rebuilt ones? Do they?
They, the company, when they rebuilt them, the well company warranties them on their own and there's not much. When the, when we got sand in seven, the first time it run the new pump and motor, it was covered a hundred percent. We had to pay for a portion of the way, half the labor cost of doing it, which in retrospect, given the program now, I would have resisted that. But at the time, it seemed, okay, we'll pay, it was five thousand dollars and it was within our store budget authority what we were approved for, so I thought, okay, we'll do it.
Is a, is a new pump more likely to have probably more of a warranty?
Yeah, a new pump will have normally like a ninety day, a hundred percent warranty.
Oh, really?
It's not very long. They're very short because of the environment they're in. And the pump manufacturers know that not all well companies are created equal. I found that out. You know, you can put a real good well company, put that in, it'll last year, year, year. A bad one puts in, lasts for days.
So is this the best bid that you've got?
We didn't go, well, this was from, okay, the first company was a company that we had a long history of doing work with. They drilled one of our wells in sixty-nine. They've been around for a long time. They had a good reputation. They did not do us well. They did not do the work properly for us. So this other company drilled one of our other wells is a much larger company nationwide. Their accountability is much bigger. So they came well, a lot of people recommended, well recommended to us, and so we, we hired that company.
The problem is, is we need a.
This, this, this well work that we're going to do now, we're going to protect it against lightning strikes as best we can, right?
Yes, yes, we got arresters on them and arresters are cheap. So we're, that's something that one of the guys on, we're talking about just last week is when, when these two are back up and running, we're going to go ahead and swap out the arresters, just put them on. They're very inexpensive, so.
Because I don't want lightning to take out a seventy-five horse motor.
Yeah, you and me both. If it's a motor on top, it's still expensive, but it's easy to change. If it's a motor down and it's submersible, it's a price that'll change.
Number four is probably the quickest turnaround, isn't it?
Yes, that's what I would like. That's my recommendation is we get, if we approve both of these, I'm going to push with Lane to do number four first because as, as Harley said, it's quickest turnaround. They may bring two trucks and they may start yanking on that liner on seven at the same time, but if they have one truck, one crew, we're going to do four first, get it running and then go to sell.
But you need an approval now so we can.
That is correct, but this got, this, this got kind of crazy. We need to talk about it. This is, we have, in my opinion, with first company, we wasted one fifty-six thousand.
But let's, we'll discuss this.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, let's.
Well, what do you guys want to do? Do you just want to approve it?
Yeah, we need to get them back up online and going.
Okay. Do I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to authorize the one hundred fifty-five, seven eighty-two, the expenditure, wait, okay.
Sorry, this, this, I think my battery died.
Second.
Motion by.
As presented.
Motion by Michael, second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
I would like to make sure that Harley's on board of the capabilities of this pump before they, that it costs more than.
We can look at, we can look at them together and make sure we understand that it's got the pumping range we're looking for.
Okay, aye.
Yeah, okay.
All right, aye. H three?
All righty, honorable governing body. So the city is anticipating replacement of approximately thirty telephones across four sites. That'll be primarily at City Hall, the wastewater treatment facility, Public Works building up front, and then down at the pool. So in 2016, the city council previously authorized a five-year contract where we would spend forty-six thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars upfront for a new phone system, which included twenty-one phones. So this system has not, lasted nearly five years since it was approved in 2016. However, the phones that were sold to us have become obsolete and staff was not informed by our existing management company that they were becoming obsolete. So essentially, we called for an issue on the phone and they said, sorry, we don't work on those anymore. Here's a guy that might be able to help you out, so. It was a little, little less than ideal situation. We felt like we didn't get any fair notice on that. So the current Toshiba phone systems can no longer be serviced or replaced with new phones. Some staff have desktop, like voicemail access and things of that nature that they no longer have access to. And I think it would be somewhere in the range of what we say Lance, like fifteen hundred dollars to kick them back, kick them back on, so.
And that also doesn't include the fact that we had no recording capabilities with these phones currently at City Hall. And.
And then also our, our previous company that we went into business with was bought out by a bigger company who has since had some questionable customer service standards since then. So staff requested bids that would include a three to five-year contract, thirty new high-quality phones for the various sites, new conference phone for the council chambers, and then one designated fax line for the front office. So we, we tried to seek out stable bidders who had a strong customer service department and less likely to be bought out or transfer owners. Obviously, there's no way to predict that, but we tried to pick stable bidders that have been in business for a long time or upstart companies. So our current IT company, Imagine IT, is stepping away from phone management entirely. We did check with them and give them an opportunity to bid on this and since their buyout, they have, they have decided to step away from phone management entirely. So there should be little to no cost or downtime during this installation according to the bidder. The bidder's going to do most of the service work and labor. Our IT company might just have to do a few tie-ins, but we're estimating downtime on phones is, is less than a day potentially, and they can do it in stages, so not all of our phones will be down at once. So these are the potential phones that we'd be looking at. Just kind of a standard desk phone with a small screen on it. An alternative option is a cordless phone. They're the exact same price and we can mix and match those anywhere. So if we wanted a cordless phone in the council chambers or they wanted one somewhere at Public Works that they could take on the move, that would be an option. So the best bid was submitted by Ideatech and they're a company based in Bueller, Kansas. They've recently placed some internet infrastructure in Goddard. This time around, the contract would be monthly rather than one single lump sum. So one-time cost would be three hundred and ninety dollars. That's the upfront installation cost. And then a recurring monthly cost of six hundred and thirty-five dollars. So again, this, this contract would be a thirty-six month, month contract. They, they offered to do double that or however long we wanted to go, but they also offered to not even necessarily do a monthly contract at all, but we, we figured thirty six months, three years would be a good number to start with. And if we give them ninety days notice before the end of that period, we could switch providers with no hassle according to them. So in this system, we wouldn't technically own the phones, but phones that are broken or damaged, become obsolete, would simply be replaced by Ideatech. So we wouldn't run into a situation where all of a sudden thirty, twenty-five phones were obsolete. We would have advanced notice. They would start a transition period and prepare us for that. So calculated the same five-year rate that we estimated on the last bid. This is nearly twenty thousand dollars less than the previous expenditure in 2016. This is kind of a confusing set of numbers that I got on kind of how we would break the pricing down.
Is that true? Would it change anything by adding hard fax number in there too?
It, it would, it would tweak the numbers a little bit, but we'll be fine. But roughly, not very much at all. And I, I bid thirty phones out, but there, there might be closer to twenty-six or twenty-seven and there's, that's not a big deal for, for the best bidder.
So the six thirty-fives per month is for thirty phones?
Thirty phones and the current fax line.
Okay.
And the conference phone, so adding a second fax line wouldn't, wouldn't change it very much.
And then they're going to switch them out at whatever, five years with upgrade?
I, yeah, sometimes the phones last longer than five years.
But do we even need hardware phones?
What do you mean? Like desk phones?
So, I mean, with my business, we run it all through, like, we've got an app on our cell phones that we can use as our number if we need it. But honestly, we all run it through our computers.
So there is, yeah, there's a corresponding computer or phone app, I think they have. They, they didn't go into a lot of detail on that, but you can, you can pull up voicemails and stuff. I don't know if you can make calls from a computer necessarily, but there's a cell phone app that you can transfer calls to, so.
Just a question on, you know.
Yeah, it would provide a lot more flexibility to work remotely for most people. We haven't necessarily, we'll have to test that upfront and see if that would be possible or not just because they fielded so many calls and everything. But yeah, there are some offline opportunities there, so, or out-of-building opportunities.
Any more questions? You guys good with it?
So if there's another comments, this would be the recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Good evening. So every year, annually in the past few years, we have budgeted for a fleet purchase. And that's what we'll be discussing tonight. In 2022, the Goddard Police Department budget for fleet purchasing is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. In November sixteen, twenty twenty-one, I had learned due to, I don't have to explain it, just the way the market is, the ordering and delivering process for the new police cars, like other vehicles in, in, in the overall market was delayed due to production issues. So I went ahead and ordered two vehicles from Traffic Control Services. That's who we utilize for upfitting. They actually purchased the vehicle and outfitted, and then we just purchased the outfitted packaged vehicle from them. A lot cleaner process. So I'm requesting the purchase of two this year hybrid Ford Explorer Police Interceptor vehicles from TCS for the cost of a hundred fifteen thousand, a hundred fifteen, six oh seven, ten, plus the additional equipment costs. And I'll go into that equipment cost addition here in a second. So by purchasing the two new vehicles, G P D will have enough vehicles to sustain the fully staffed take-home vehicle program that we have instituted and has been very successful for us. Part of that is, that success is because each officer obviously takes care of their patrol vehicle with more integrity, with more ownership. And from that, you get a better service record and cleanliness and overall resale. So based on our current staffing and fleet, our goal is to continue with the scheduled replacement of three vehicles for 2023, for next year, acquiring a budget line item increase and each year moving forward. So the hybrid vehicles, which is what I'm wanting to move to, it'll be our first two. And I think based on some studies and some discussions with other agencies that have already implemented them and had very good things to say about them, I've personally even got in and driven them. They seamlessly handle the same, with the exception that they might actually handle just a little bit better for the response. So we have, we put our first two just explorers, conventional explorers, in the service last year. They have handled very well. We've been very happy with them. Reno County, I worked with them and talked with them. They did a study last year on their four hybrid explorers. They had a fuel average of sixteen point six one miles per gallon. And the average mile per gallon for our conventional V six models that we purchased were thirteen miles per gallon. We might be idling a little bit more in town than they were covering the whole county. But at four dollars a gallon, these new hybrids are estimated to save us a little over five thousand dollars over five years compared to the standard V six. March of 2022, we utilized Purple Wave to sell a retired and stripped, two thousand fourteen four-wheel drive, sorry, two-wheel drive police auto. That was vehicle twenty-four. It had eighty-four thousand miles on it and we got in auction ten thousand dollars for that. May 2021, last year, we received a check from an insurance claim on wrecked patrol vehicle thirty-two in the amount of sixteen thousand seven eighty-eight. So at the time, I opted to delay the vehicle purchase to replace it based on the staffing at that point. So that amount was actually placed back in the general fund and we kind of discussed being able to utilize that to help purchase what we knew was going to be a little bit of an extra overage on the budget line item. So additional items needed, like I discussed in that first couple slides for the patrol cars, in addition to just the overall cost of the vehicle and the upfitting would be painting the doors white, which for both vehicles, these, these numbers here for both vehicles. It's three thousand dollars. The graphics together is eight fifty. Two stop stick tire deflation devices that we would put one in each vehicle, that's nine fifty. A new mobile radio just itself is thirty-six fifty. I would say one because I have one that I'd already ordered last year that will be able to go into that new vehicle. Still waiting on it, so that's how far out production of this equipment is. Two radar units that I can get pretty quickly for sixty-four hundred. Two radar units that I can get pretty quickly for $6,400. And two Toughbook laptops and mounts that we've will be able to get for $7,500. I put an asterisk there because the price actually went up from previous numbers that I had based off of. And I just got the new numbers in a quote today. So if you look at your actual agenda report, there's going to be a $1,500 difference in that number. That's why I put the asterisk up there, so I changed all the numbers to reflect that. We're very happy with the Toughbook laptops that we have, and very durable, and they work very well. And Imagine IT or like Gilmore has no issues servicing them. Here is a kind of a chart with analysis showing what we had budgeted for this year, $110. There's that $16,788 from the insurance check, $10,000 from the vehicle 23's sale. That gives us $136,000, almost $137,000 there as to what we could essentially play with. For these two outfitted Explorers, I gave you those extra numbers there. So there's your $115 for just the vehicles and being outfitted. Here's the extra equipment that would be necessary. So that brings the total for purchasing just for these two vehicles, $138,452.10. And then on this side of this chart right here is a little bit of our vehicle replacement plan. Currently, we have 12 vehicles for patrol police use. That doesn't include the ACO vehicle, which its mileage is great. It's fitted for its purpose, and we have no reason to need to get rid of that. It's handling just fine. 2022, we're not going to get rid of any. We're going to add two, which will bring us up to 14, which is our fully-staffed employees numbers. Then in 2023, I'd like to get rid of three that will need to be retired, and then add three more, which brings us back to that 14, and we'll continue on that path unless something drastic changes, which I don't foresee that. But we can obviously discuss that in the future. This right here is just an analysis of our current fleet. So you can kind of see, based on the vehicle number, it's year, what kind of vehicle it is, its mileage, the annual mileage per year. It's a pretty rough estimate based on our current numbers for each vehicle. Some of them are going to be, not every vehicle's going to be the same just because of of officers' assignments, their purpose, their their extra duties that they have. Obviously, I'm in the office a lot more, so my vehicle is not going to have as many miles per year. Here's the plan for 2023. For these three vehicles, I would project that we'd need to be replaced based on their mileage and their year. Down here are the two vehicles that I would like to purchase and when we would like to retire them. As you can see, in 2023, we'd have three vehicles that we would retire, adding three more to this. Any questions about that?
Were we not able to use any of the equipment out of the old cars?
Well, we're not getting rid of any vehicle right now.
Well, we wrecked one.
And we, yeah, we already took that equipment. And we have upgraded some radars, but things like the cages. The vehicle that was wrecked was a Charger. So we don't have the need for any of that cage anymore. And obviously, that cage and all that equipment in there was.
Yeah, but you have a computer, a radar unit.
Yep, and all that's been pulled out. That's why there's, we never had enough essentially for fully staffed at that time, as far as computers go, laptops go. We've had a deployed officer for a while. We've had, we've been short one. And we've had this last whole, almost two years, we've had a sergeant on my duty. He hasn't been out in the field and been working on a computer. As much equipment as we can replace and utilize newer, so it's not being, especially like radars. If you were to be driving down the road, you would want your your driver's history to be checked and by a very modern and up-to-date radar unit rather than one that's 25 years old. Not to say it's questionable, but you'd probably feel more positive about the validity of that.
What comes on if it was in my favor here?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And speaking of radars, we were able to utilize with the Kansas Highway Patrol in the KDOT, we were able to get some upgraded radars that they turned in when they purchased throughout the whole state for all their patrol vehicles. So we were able to get some fairly new refurbished radars for free. So the need for upgrading so many radars is not present currently. But I would like to put, take a brand-new vehicle, take new wiring, new equipment, put it in those vehicles rather than just the wear and tear of being in a vehicle like that for so long and then taking them out. But as much equipment as we can, such as a computer and a computer mount, we would be able to reuse as it was necessary. But we haven't been to that point where it is necessary, based on the vehicles that we have and where they're coming from and their lifespan. I will say that just, and there's just the look of the schematics for, not the schematics, but the detail work from the outfitters, or not the outfitters, but the graphic design people.
Like compliance and why?
Yeah. And like I said, it does cost a little bit more to paint that. But it does have a little bit of a profound look.
Here we are.
And an understanding and visibility. You would think that that a vehicle like this would stand out, especially during the daytime in a subdivision, so that it would prevent people, but we still do catch people speeding in that vehicle. So I'm not saying it were sleuthy, but.
I'm still mad my ring missed it.
And they will, these hybrid vehicles, I did check, they will drive just as strongly down a dirt road as they would paved road.
Like four-wheel drive or two-wheel?
No, they're, they're, they're all-wheel drive.
I like it.
For financials, if approved, the purchase would go toward $10,210, $8210, which is the PD Admin Fleet budgeted line item. Legal, approved, asked to form. Recommendation is, the government body approved the use of budgeted money and additional funds for the purchase of two fully outfitted 2022 Ford Police Interceptor Hybrid Explorers and the necessary equipment in the amount of $138,453.
Do you guys have any more questions?
So between the budgeted money and the money you've got from the sale and the insurance claim?
It's a difference between $138,452 and $136,788.
$116,65. That's basically the extra you're asking for that's not already been budgeted.
Yes.
Okay.
Budgeted or allocated from? Yes.
Michael, any questions?
No. I think we're good.
Do we got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
The two fully outfitted 2022 Ford PI Hybrid Explorers and necessary equipment in the amount of $138,453.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Lions? Ready, each five? Dan the man?
I don't know if Dan the man can even move. I've been an and over all day.
How are they doing out there?
I'll talk about that in a minute. The Goddard Lions Club, a community service organization, tonight is making a presentation to you on our service and what we do for the community and making a special request for some additional funds. Do I need to use this? Yes, I guess I do. I haven't used this in so long that I won't use it.
It backwards.
Sorry, I slipped it on you, sorry. Who's your man? Thank you. You know, 1987, I became a lion. Why did I become a lion? I was a fourth-grade teacher. I believed in community involvement. I believed in service. I believed in vision, because at that time, I was only seeing, when I was a kid, my eyesight was, I was legally blind when I was born. And so they got my vision down to 2070. And about that time, about 1990, I was able to have cataract surgery, and the doctor couldn't believe it. He says, I don't know why they haven't fixed this before. We can take all the stigmatism out of your eyes and make you back to 2030. So I've been real pleased with that. And in the sponsorship of the Boy Scout Program, which I was in charge of at that time. You know, our motto is, we serve. And when there's a need, there's a lion. And this will be most evident when I get into the presentation. Some of the things you probably don't know, if you haven't been around Goddard for a long time, is the Goddard Lions Club actually bought Means Park and gave it to the city. The city was so poor at that point that they asked Lions Club to spend the money to buy that whole park. And we took out a loan and then paid it back and bought the park that is now currently Means Park and donated it to the city. Other things like that, we went in cooperation with the city of Goddard and the school district to build the original baldim, is down at Discovery Intermediate. I won't tell you what my father said when I was supposed to be reharvesting and sliding down a pole with a painter's mitt, but black paint on the backstops. He says, get your over here now. I need a truck driver. But anyway, we were doing that, and a lot of us worked on very hard. A lot of community members, a lot of people from the city and and the school district worked together to build those backstops. Our lions are part of a larger organization. Basically, we, around the world, with 114,210 countries, and we're dedicated to a group of core values. These are the core values that we use: childhood cancer, diabetes, disaster, environment, hunger, youth, and vision. And these are some of these. We have 22 service projects in this community that we do as a Lions Club. And we believe that where there's a need, we're going to try to find a solution. Today, I was honored to hand a $500 check to a person out here that had a fire at 283rd from our Kansas Lions Foundation, that gives out what we call KALI grants for people who lose their homes completely to a natural disaster. Right now, these are the activities that we do during the year. Mint Tree, Vision, and Glasses. We gave out 13 vision exams and glasses at the local eye doctor. Goddard Public Library and Bookmobile, and we'll talk about that a little bit. Larry called me up this morning and said, do you have a pair of crutches? And I says, yes, we have them at the library. They're free of charge. Check them out. Wheelchairs, crutches, all that stuff, and we'll talk about that a little bit. Firework show, purchase of trees and planting. Our Goddard Leo Club, the Goddard Food Pantry. We just gave $3,000 to the Food Pantry at Methodist Church. Our Blessing Boxes, we'll be talking about that. Our Yellow Dot Program, Wy and Eric will be talking about that. Our recycling program, which is not going to be talked about tonight, but we've collected already 5,000 pounds of plastic sacks and have put in the community six total benches already. Two of them, which are at the library. Two of them are at Oak Street Elementary. The Catholic Church has got, received one already, and is in the process of getting another one. And I think that Apollo and Explorer are both getting benches awesome. We did a lot of the labor to get that started and take care of it. Local disaster, the homes, is what I was talking about. Lions State Band, we send high school students to a band camp each year. We did the last two years because of COVID, but they're out there again. We gave away college scholarships. This year, we gave five $750 scholarships out to two high schools here in Goddard. The fruit baskets, we've talked about, what we'll be talking about, Pocket Park in the library, Neighbors United, bus stop shelters, which we built one at Maple Valley, except for the roof, it's too windy to put the roof on. Christmas on Main Street, Veterans and Thanksgiving feast for the community, William Allen White books at the Goddard Public Library. And we bought 14 or 15 round tables for the community center. We also did this. Became an eyesore in the community. Everybody was griping about it. Nobody wanted to take responsibility. So Lions Club went to and received a $500 grant from Lions Clubs International and was able to, with that additional money from our club, to put that up. And so if it gets tore down by the highway construction, it gets tore down. But, you know, we covered it up. And we welcome people to our community.
And we would try and save the route as well for you.
Yeah. I I hope you do, because my daughter wants it. I just pulled this off the tier last night. This is just from February. But our Goddard Lions Club did 21,000, over 21,000 hours of volunteer service since Januar or July of last year. 33 service activities, 3,641 volunteer hours. We've given away already $69,000. We've given away quite a bit more than that already. And we've raised $23,540. Of course, our big thunderwader is Razor, is our fireworks team's tent. And when you have that and some of the things. I'm going to let, well, Deborah, I just goofed that, no, I didn't. Deborah's going to come up here and talk to us a little bit about a camera, about the Bookmobile and other things.
Just you, okay. Hi, I'm Deborah Funky, and I'm Dan's daughter, obviously, as you said. I also work at the library. So I just want to talk a little bit about what the Lions Club has done for the library. We have sponsored some of these awesome early literature sandwiches and tree kits. They're very cool. They are basically storytime in a bag. If you know Carrie at the library, we like to call this Carrie's Brain in a Bag. It's several books. It's going to be activities for preschool-age kids that they can check out for a week. So that's pretty cool. Lions Club donated $5,000 for the Bookmobile. So we're sponsoring that. And then we just, we have been purchasing the William Allen White collection books for the entire year, every year for lots of years, as long as I can remember. So that's 14 books more.
It's between 14 and 20.
14 and 20 books, sorry. Look at the director there. And then obviously, Dad talked to, no, you didn't talk about the Pocket Park. So we've got land for the Pocket Park and worked with Boy Scouts to redo that. And the library can utilize that for storytime and some different activities and stuff. And I'm sure we do a couple other things in the light of the next day. But the main thing is the durable medical equipment. So we clean that collection, keep that collection going, and the library checks that out just with the library card. It is free of use, and we keep that running. So with, in partnership with the library, which is pretty awesome. And that's all I have for the library.
Thank you.
Next.
I wasn't able to get the Spot camera tonight. Quite frankly, simply because I didn't get back from Mammoth and over quick enough. But Spot camera is an $8,000 machine that I can go up to, my friendly Lance here, and he can stand right here, and I can shoot it right here. Has a little twitchy squealy thing, and in 30 seconds or less, he'll tell me what his eyesight is and if he needs to go to the eye doctor. And it will actually, we did all of Goddard Public Schools this year. We did Clearwater Schools. We did Grinwick Schools, some of the, some of the Red Guard and Claim. And our district, which encovers basically southeast Kansas, we have eight machines altogether. Goddard Lions owns their own machine, because we use so much in our school district, because a lot of the kids that are on special IEPs or programs have to be checked twice a year. And so not only do they refer to the beginning of the year, then they're given another check at the end of the year, and it's required part of their educational plan. We secure, like I talked to you about eye exams, about 13 of them, and collection used glasses. Last year, this club collected over 25,000 used pair of glasses out of this community in doctors' offices. They go all over the United States collecting them. They are sorted in Burlington, Kansas. And then they are taken to Indiana after they go to the prisons, and they they actually use some of the Kansas prisons to actually clean them and check the strength of each lens. And they're shipped in and sent overseas to third-world countries. And that's one of the first things that Lions Club International did was their first strategic point was vision. Kim Appleton and Lion Becky are going to talk to you about the four blessing boxes in Mint Tree.
So hi, I am Lion Kim Appleton, and this is my first time ever coming here and giving this to you guys. And this is Lion Becky Funky. So a couple of our projects that we do, last year, we... Was it last year? I feel like it was.
Yes, last year.
We built and installed four blessing boxes at a couple of different locations across Goddard. We are actually in the process of building a fifth and putting that in...
Tag Church.
At Tag Church, there we go. So they're talking about running that as one of their youth ministry projects to keep that stocked. But we are currently stocking four blessing boxes all over the town. They are used quite frequently, some more than others, but we keep those full as often as twice a week, sometimes less if the weather's real crazy. But there's definitely a need for that, and so it's exciting to be able to fill that need for the community.
I can talk about Mitten Tree. I'm obviously connected to Dan and Deborah. I have been Lion for 20 years, but I've been involved with Mitten Tree for much longer than that. I've been involved with Mitten Tree when it first started 30 years ago, Dan. When we had a minister say he had a few families. And at that point, Lions Club totally funded Christmas gifts and some food for families, and we actually went out and delivered. Obviously, the program has grown because this year we served 135 families, as it says, and basically 400 children. Mitten Tree is probably our most recognizable project after Fall Festival. And a great community partnership. The schools collect food, the food that we distribute. The schools and other organizations contribute the gifts. Each Mitten Tree participant gets several boxes of food at Thanksgiving, at Christmas. Each child gets at least one outfit and two or three toys. In addition to what the community provides, the Lions Club kicks in anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000 to supplement. We buy some perishable goods. We provide a turkey at Thanksgiving and a ham at Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Oh, and I can attest to the plastic. Half of my garage is filled with it.
She had to remove it in the car because I didn't remove it before I took off Endover this morning. Supporting the senior population. I'm going to let Lion Eric get up here and talk about Yellow Dot. We have done fruit baskets for years to senior citizens and widow and widowers of the community. We've handed out, the last couple of years, we've handed out about 125, actually delivering them by Lions Club members. And you know, for a senior person or even a husband and wife that are in their 70s or 80s, you get a fruit basket, you ought to see the kinds of things we get from them as far as thank you. So thank you for remembering us. Thank you for understanding that, you know, things don't always happen, and it's good to hear somebody's voice. We try to stop there and talk to them, so it makes a personal connection for them.
I didn't give mine last year, Dan.
I actually thought I might have fixed that.
I didn't feel you were senior yet. You're just young and spry.
I want to give each one of you a sample of our Yellow Dot Program. This is brought to us out of Topeka is where it starts. This is a... The Yellow Dot Program is a program for people like myself with diabetes or anybody with heart disease, anything like that. What's in this envelope, there's an application, a form in here you fill out about yourself, your medical problem, whatever. And then there's a sticker you put on your window, and the Goddard PD, Sheriff's Officer, Highway Patrol, EMS, Fire Department, all those have been notified. We contacted them, got all information of who we need to contact with them, sent them the information. And then we, as Lions Club, pass these out to whoever needs them, whether it be you yourself, your parents, whoever. They put this sticker in their window. Maybe somebody like myself who has diabetes is driving down the highway erratically. They pull me over, see that yellow dot. They go into my glove box, which also, as it says, put a picture of yourself in there. They can look at that and say, oh, this gentleman has diabetes. That could be his problem instead of him being drunk. And so that gives them a heads up that the person inside that vehicle has a medical emergency, has a medical problem that they may need to address right then and there. So that's what this is for. It's free of charge to the public. We, the Lions Club, pay for it all out of our pocket. It's what, 60 cents?
60 cents a piece.
60 cents a piece. And so we provide that to the public.
Thank you, Eric. Lion Cameron, Deborah will talk to you a little bit about our Goddard Lions Leos, Lions events supporting youth cancer patients and developing youth leaders.
We also have Leo Nicole Dunn, which sounds very exciting.
Excuse me.
Well, you didn't know she was coming. That took some convincing. So the Goddard Leo Club was chartered and sponsored by the Goddard Lions Club in 2018 with the idea of having a club for community middle school and high school students of all abilities that engages youth in various community service opportunities and experiences as well as helping to develop leadership skills. So our Leo Club supports the Goddard Lions Club with many of their service projects, such as Mitten Tree, the fruit baskets, the fireworks tent sales, and most recently, the car show. The Leo Club also helps with the Lions Club Monthly Bingo Night, Baron concession stands, and that is the Leo Club's main source of funding. And then the focus of the Goddard Leo Club is supporting pediatric cancer. One of the... It's really five service groups. Dad listed seven. There's really five. For Lions Club International, the other ones are Morse Kansas Specialties. But we're doing that with making fleece blankets. So as a club, we utilize a meeting or two each year and make fleece blankets, which are then delivered to forward distribution to childhood cancer patients in our area. And let's see. Leos have also completed other service projects in our community and throughout the state, projects such as planting flowers at Devon Estates in their courtyard, writing letters and cards for delivery to both local adult care facilities during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, assisting with various aspects of the Kansas Lion Foundation Alert Trailer, which is currently in Endover, to assist with tornado response, as well as persisting... Hmm, participate in statewide service projects with other Leo Clubs. As we start to meet more consistently with the Leos, since COVID has let up a little bit, we're beginning to work on and develop other signature projects for our club. We'll let you take it over.
Hi, I'm Nicole. I'm the current president of the Leo Club. Leo stands for Leadership Experience and Opportunity. At regular meetings, we learn the structure of the meetings and elect and vote for leadership goals, discuss and plan both fun and service activities. I myself have personally learned many great communications skills through the Leo Club, and it's just a great opportunity for me to get to know other kids in the community and help out. Thank you.
That's one of the lights of my eyes there. So I am now the parent of two adult children, and both of them have been in the Leo Club. So I really appreciate having it around. They have not only gained valuable experience and confidence in speaking with adults, they also participate in activities that help build their resumes and scholarship applications. So that's been great. The... Some of the other... She kind of hit on some of them.
Sorry.
So, over the years, a group of our... As far as leadership goes, a group of our Leos has attended several of the midwinter rallies, that's in Manhattan, and they've gotten to work on special projects with Leos from across the state, and then also do team building and leadership skills workshops there. And then they've also been able to participate in some district conventions, one of which they got to meet and get a presentation from a former international president from Sri Lanka. So that was really cool and a really memorable experience for them all, so. One other thing I want to highlight... At one of those conventions, we also sorted out, I don't know, it was tens of thousands of pairs of glasses. They sorted them by what we could use, what was broken, those kinds of things. So that was a cool project. The other thing that we wanted to talk about and just mention is the barrel train that the Leos have started to take over a little bit on the running of. And over the last few years, we have spent a lot of time repainting and refurbishing those barrels, and they are taking a lot of ownership over running it at various activities. And we have just renamed it the Larry Lee Memorial Train after Larry Lee, one of our great members, who has passed. Thank you.
You know, there are very many projects we support besides just our local projects, in state and international. One of them was where I was today. Many of you have seen this truck in Goddard because I'm the driver. We have two of these trucks in the state. One of them is a yellow one we used to have, and it's gone up to Riley, Kansas, and then this one here. We have over $15,000 worth of materials in there, including gloves, hats, all kinds of things. And of course, we work for our community partners, the Red Cross and the United Way, to get those things out. If you saw the news thing tonight from Channel 12, you saw our big flag in the back. They didn't mention this, but you know, we know we serve. We don't need recognition. We just know that we took care of them. And you know, when you get a shopping list, I kept looking at them, and I said, well, Dan, we need this, and this, and this, and this. And I says, you know, I got $10,000. That doesn't mean we have to spend it all. So how do we support these projects? Well, we have food sales. We have donations and grants. We have fireworks sales and bingo, car show, and other partnerships. One of the donations and grants was, we received a grant from Home Depot, so we were able to buy the round tables at the community center for us. And so we were able to get 14, 15 of those and put them in the community center. I'm going to talk to you about two things I'd like to visit with you on concerning our request tonight. And I talked to Thatcher, and I says, you think I should hand this? He said, I just tell them how much it's going to cost and go on. Since Lion Larry, who was in the Mayes Club in 1990-something, he was shooting them off. One day, Larry drove across 54 with the electronic fireworks show, and a trailer came off, and I said, off the ball. And I said, that's the last time we're doing that. And so we...
No one was injured, Dan.
Nobody was injured. After spending all day putting those things in, I said, let's just hand fire them now. Let's don't worry about it. We spent $5,000, and over the years, the city has contributed and helped out. Last year, you spent $5,000, gave us $5,000. I hate to tell you, but fireworks is going up to a tune of 25%. All the fireworks are not being shipped out of Los Angeles now, or shipped through Los Angeles now. They're going through the Panama Canal, coming up the Gulf Coast. They can't get anything out of Los Angeles. We spent last year an extra $500 and gave them night show works to add to the show to make sure they're saying. We spent $1,258.17 on food. We spent $750 on entertainment. We spent in-kind donations. We received $1,500. We did volunteer hours that were 150 hours at $8 an hour, and that's cheap by today's standards when you realize that Brahms is hiring them for 14 and can't find anybody to work at $1,200. And then, of course, our licensee fee for 100. So last year, the total cost for the show was $10,000. Remember that I told you that we spent $5,000 twenty some years ago? And the show has gone down every year just a little bit from the big stuff, down and down and further down. At this point, we're requesting that the Lions Clubs increase that to... Or that the city increase, excuse me. Last year, the fireworks show went over 20%. We're trying to hope we can get it to 20% and not 25. We're asking for, requesting a funding increase to $7,500, and this increase is $2,500 for the city. We also realize that our food costs are going to go up. The hot dogs that we served last year that were $6.50 or $9.98 now a package. So quite a quick increase. So the food, we know we're going to have, and we also know that entertainment's going to cost the same entertainer once more money. And right now, we're expecting an increase of that. So that's the first part of our request, is to increase our actual budget for the fireworks from 5,000 to 7,500. The other thing is Veterans Day and Thanksgiving Feast. We served a total of 434 community members and spent $2,012 for food. The city gave us $1,000, and we, Lions Club, contributed $1,012. Food and food supplies have increased, will have increased 25% or expect to even increase more. We're requesting an increase from the city from 1,000 to 1,500. And Lions also plan to increase their budget for the same amount from 1,000 to 1,500. We feel that this is a very vital community project, that we bring people together, we honor our veterans at that time, and we also, it's kind of a good way to get a feel-good opportunity for our community. We've had many times the city staff has come down and helped. Thatcher cooked turkey last year. He told me it took twice as long than he thought it would cook, which told me Thatcher hadn't been spending a lot of time in the kitchen. But anyway, so those are my requests, and all of ours, not mine. I'd also like to introduce some of the Lions that are... Well, we didn't introduce one person that's here, but I didn't recognize him. It's our president, Gordon Graham. And Gordon's going into his tenure this year after two years of serving as president. Are there any questions from the council that any of us can answer?
So total, you're asking for pretty much a $3,000 increase overall?
So you want nine? You would... You're requesting 9,000?
No, we're requesting 3,000.
A total of nine. A total of nine, yeah. And last year, we did six.
Right.
Okay.
You did 6,000 last year. We're asking for nine this year.
Yeah, that's something that we made in the past, the decision that come budget time, we would take those requests and review them at budget time, which is what in... Brian, is that in July?
Well, it's been pushed back with the state change in the calendar. So we're looking at in August time, June, July, August.
But this is for this year. We asked Brian last year for this information for this year.
We put the... We did put the amount in the budget for, in the general fund for dispersment and stuff.
So that already budgeted?
Well, there's a chunk there for the Lions Club, yes.
How much?
I want to say we did 10, just in general for fireworks or for whatnot.
Do you guys have a mission increasing it 3,000 more?
If it's within what was authorized in the budget, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
I agree with the rule of the budget, yeah.
I have no problem with it, so.
And I guess the only question that we have, I know that Brian has worked on it with the lawyer, but we have the Pocket Park that we've owned for five years. Since we cleaned it up, we'd really like to give it back to the city, and we're paying $297 a year in property taxes coming out of our donation pockets. So we'd like to see if I could possibly get it over to you. If we need to provide more paperwork, I thought we provided it all.
Yeah, I believe we're waiting on the title, or something with the title.
And I have the title sitting at my desk at home.
Well, the...
The title coming out?
It's clear title, I believe. I'd have to go back and look. I'd have to go back and look at the email from Carl, but it's been some times.
Okay. Probably just waiting on the title commitment from the title company.
Okay. So we're thinking I need to advise you.
Yeah, I thought that Carl, our partners, have been in contact with Mr. Barrett about that.
I don't care about Mr. Barrett. I just want to get it done.
I'll follow up.
Because, quite frankly, it's $249 or some odd cents that my club does not want to pay for. We've already put $7,000 in that park, and grass, and benches. We pay, help the scouts pay for the materials and stuff like that. And poor David Curtis has demanded every year that we plant plants. And he went out and bought them, and we buy the plants beforehand and plant there. So I have to keep David happy. I have to keep my club happy. So I want to get off the string.
Understood. We'll check with Carl and then-
Just let me know if you need something else.
Will do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
You can blame the length of the program on him, because I've tried to keep it to 15 minutes. He says, "Oh, just take whatever time you want."
It's all Thatcher's fault. Okay.
Do we, we need to make a vote?
Since it's budgeted, we don't need to make a motion, do we?
Their request, so that way we know how much.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve $9,000?
I'll motion that.
Motion by Michael?
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All righty. City administrators report.
Yeah, and the last thing that I noticed that we're waiting on is the title insurance.
Okay.
And that was from June of 2019.
We need to provide that?
I believe so. And Mr. Barrett was supposed to-
How can we take care of that?
So, we'll follow up. The Starbarn site, you can see that the second phase of fields is underway, as well as, I'm assuming, the parking area. This is the existing fields, and you can see the field prep, which is the subsurface of these containers with the green roll. Essentially, the field turf is what's in the elongated, so we're looking at this. Just an update from September, I'm sorry, from April 11th for our subdivisions. So we'll be looking forward to adding a new outline for where Trails End is located. You can see that we have Phase Three Cloverleaf. Rustic Creek is still, we're expecting permits for specs to be pulled anytime with the first phase, which is from essentially this corner right here. And then, we've got Phase Two of Cloverleaf, which is the first two phases there. And then, of course, we'll be adding Trails End. And you can see Arbor Creek with that second phase that's just been finished there. There are clubhouse and pool area. Up Bridge showing the progress of the construction. So you see that there's only essentially one lot remaining for construction to begin there. Cloverleaf Phase Three. You can see, looking back toward the seasons, for the final part of Phase Two. And then over here is where Phase Three will come in, come out, where that river runs, and come back through Rustic Creek. As I said, we're expecting permits to be pulled anytime for initiation of spec housing. The Cedar Edition duplexes, you can see the private road and parking area there. And these units will be going in. And the, due to our land use codes, there's no site plans required. It's just very able to be made construction with that zone. You can see the progress on the Swedish coffee stand. And just say, we'll have the pool opening on May 21st. And so we'll have updated information on the swim lessons. And then, of course, we would like to thank everyone who turned out Saturday for Neighbor United. And we'll be looking at a lot of development items for May, and start the preliminary work for the budget and CIP for Jim. That concludes my report. If there are any questions for, I myself, or the rest of the city staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Larry? I'd like to thank Dan and the Lions Club for what they did out at Andover. I've seen that on the news, and I was happy to know that the Lions were involved in getting out there and helping to give comfort to those who lost almost everything. And it's appreciated. And I wished I could have been there to help, but unfortunately, I had to work. But I appreciate those who did go. You're quite a part of the community, and I'm thankful to have you serving the community. That's all I got.
I want to thank the Lions for all they do for our community and the neighboring communities in the state of Kansas, and international, and all the things. Neighbors United was amazing this weekend. We had a great turnout. And it was just, it was nice to see the different organizations in the community out and about and doing things. And I want to thank Thatcher and the public works guys for all the hard work being around and available when people had questions or needed things. I kind of harassed them a little bit all day long.
Oh, you guys did the hard work.
I didn't. I just said, "Oh, put a pink one over there." Yeah, it was great. I don't think I even touched a shovel. And I want to ask, can we get the city administrator reports on the website?
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be awesome, because I went to reference something, and it was like, I have no idea where to find what I need to reference.
We'll do a big dump tomorrow, then.
Awesome. I appreciate that. That's all I got.
Michael? So, when you're doing the turkey, and it's, you know, one way to speed that sucker up is to spatchcock it. You cut it right through the middle of the breast, two halves, that way, you know, it cooks even fast.
They were just breast. There was no bone in it whatsoever.
I'm pretty sure they say mine tasted the best, but there's no blind taste test.
It helps a lot if you're smoking, smatchcock.
I put it on the smoker, so.
Fry it.
I'm going to make this really fast, because I've been watching Dan like he's ready for bed. You guys did an awesome job today, so you need to go home and get some sleep for tomorrow.
There you go. I had to be over there at 6 o'clock.
There you go. So we'll make this fast.
It's a good thing you retired.
Okay. I can't, I can't say any more than the rest of the governing body has already said. So thank you guys so much. I believe we have an executive session we have to go into. Do I have a motion? Before we do that, I'd like to thank Brooke for the good job he did up there this last weekend of handling that. That was super organized, I thought. And people were able to come in and out of there and get rid of their junk. And I think he did an exceptional job, probably the best job I've seen him do.
Thank you. You guys did a good job.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to go into the exec session?
Make a-
Motion by Larry?
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
During executive session, but we're going to extend it for another 15 minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Brent, second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
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 That number six inches, I measured it all. Like sweet. Like he knows the rules.
Let the record show that there was no binding action taken during an executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Larry. All in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm thirty-two.
Yeah.
Thirty-one.
Echoed both of us with our bad ears. We were getting along just fine.